All right, it is six o'clock. I will call the Sartell City Council meeting to order for May 12th. Please rise for pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Council, next order of business would be the adoption of the agenda. Take a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. We have approval of minutes from April 28th regular meeting and then two April 28th special meetings. Take those as one if there's a motion.
I'll move that.
A motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
All second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Those carry. On to special presentations. We have League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Luke Fisher. I'm Executive Director at the League of Minnesota Cities. I'm trying to figure out what this microphone is gonna do. Um, last person was a little shorter than me. Um, so I'm the Executive Director at the League of Minnesota Cities and really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I'm joined by my colleague Dan Greenswick, who is our Trust Administrator. He'll talk second. We're really here to do one thing, and that's to say thank you to you and thank you to your city administrator, Anna, uh, who has concluded her service on the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust Board. Now, anytime you get recognition from someone, anytime somebody comes to say thank you, it's important, not just for you, because you kind of know who we are already, but for the public to know why we're here and why the organization matters and why it's important that Anna had a big voice in our organization over a number of years. So as an association, we represent eight hundred and forty-one of the state's eight hundred and fifty-six cities. We insure just about every single city in the state, um, and we, we do that in really specific and I think hopefully meaningful ways for our members. Folks have a question about how to do something, they give us a call. We train newly elected and experienced officials. We advocate on your behalf, uh, at the, at the state Capitol. And when something bad happens and you have an insurance claim, we're there to help cover it. We're also there to get upstream too with loss control to help prevent bad things from happening. And to do that in a meaningful way as an organization, we need to have a board of directors that care a lot about cities in Minnesota. And Anna's been on our Insurance Trust Board and has been at the helm of the work that we do day in and day out to make sure that the service we're, services we're providing are really aligned with what our members need. Now, I've known Anna since before the league, from my city administrator days, and I can tell you that she is one of the most respected people out there and in the profession. She's done a fantastic job being a steward of, uh, tru- uh, public trust, integrity, ethics, and that leadership, Anna, I think, is something that we've really appreciated at the league. So I wanted to say thank you to you and let Dan say a few words.
Thank you. As, uh, Luke said, I'm the administrator of the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. Uh, we're the folks who give you your workers' comp and your property and casualty liability insurance, and, uh, we really appreciate your membership. But I also want to say thank you first for allowing us to be here today, but also thank you for sharing Anna with us. Um, she has been an absolute pleasure to have on the board. She's exactly the sort of level-headed, engaged person we want representing our members as we think about ways we can provide products and services to all of you. And that's exactly what she did as, as a trustee and as the vice chair of our board. She helped guide decisions that made life better for not only the people of Sartell, but people around the state of Minnesota. Uh, I want to thank her for that and for just being a genuinely fun person to hang out with once in a while. And, and I'd like to thank the rest of the people here in Sartell as well, uh, the mayor, council members, the, the staff. Chief, you've been a, a, a big voice in the public safety community. We appreciate your efforts on, on that behalf and the community as a whole. Um, you allowed Anna to serve as a trustee, the, the same way you've, you've encouraged your elected officials and staff in the past to get involved on behalf of the league and the trust. And that, that says a lot about the culture in the city, that willingness to pitch in and, and share your knowledge, share your creativity with other people in the state of Minnesota, and it makes a big difference, and we really appreciate it. So I'll just close by saying, you know, thank you for your contributions, thank you for your membership in the trust, and, and thank you for, uh, letting us borrow Anna for, for the last few years for a while. We, we appreciate it. And if there's ever anything we can do for you, please don't hesitate to let us know.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, council, next on the agenda is the, uh, community comment. We do not have anyone signed up for that, uh, for tonight. We'll move on to community linkage. Uh, there we have one item, which is annexation and rezone of the wire property.
Mayor, members of the council, I am the short one, and I'm the one moving the mic down. Um, you get me tonight for community development items instead of Carrie, so bear with me as I, uh, walk us through this item. Um, in front of you, you have a request for annexation as well as a rezone application at the same time. This item was approved by planning commission at the last meeting on the fifth. Um, I'm gonna start with the annexation to talk about first. You can notice it's highlighted here in the red in the image on your screens. Um, this would be an annexation following our lease-up orderly annexation agreement. A few reasons why this annexation, uh, makes sense for the city of Sartell. It does involve a future development opportunity, tax base, development fees, deferred assessments, and then also the connection of Beadle Boulevard, uh, which right now you can kind of see dead ends, um, at the top of the screen there. Little bit of property history regarding this property. Uh, in the 2016 comp plan, that entire blue area there is known as Town Square, zoned as Town Square, um, which never really developed into fruition, and so that zoning class actually no longer exists, although it's within our comp plan. So when that annexation comes in, we need to determine what that zoning will be. If you, if they don't apply for a zoning, it automatically goes per OAA to an R1 or RR, which is residential or rural residential. The applicant has, uh, proposed within, with the annexation that they desire an R3, which is a multifamily zoning classification. Um, I believe you can kind of see some of the neighboring properties that are around, surrounding this property are also zoned R3 or have recently been zoned R3, and then with a little bit to the south there of, uh, general business commercial. Um, the property owners do desire to market this as R3 and proactively zone it so that any sales would not be contingent upon that zoning classification. If the rezone is not approved with the annexation, the annexation would be withdrawn. I will allow, take any questions now, or feel free to open the public hearing, and I can, I'm happy to answer any questions after that as well.
Council, any questions on this item before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the annexation and rezone of the wire property, please step forward. Second offer, anyone wishing to testify?
A chance just to comment about?
Yeah.
Yep. Should I state your name and address?
State your name and address for the record. The floor's yours.
Um, hi, Sarah Bavelli, and I live on Seventeenth Street South. Neighbors there? Um, I don't know. I thought I'd maybe learn a little bit more. From what we understand, this is gonna be zoned as possibly another apartment complex? Is that it?
Yeah, R3 would, would be a multifamily, uh, as dense of, uh, densely populated as, as we allow.
Okay, um, well, I, you know, when I bought the property, my house on Seventeenth Street South, like, eight years ago, it, I liked it because the neighborhood was so quiet and peaceful. There's a field across the street. My kids could play in the alley and in the neighborhood, and since then, they have built so many apartment buildings in that area. It's just insane, and I just can't imagine, is it gonna be more and more and more? And we're losing that small, you know, house yard neighborhood feel to it, so... Just a concern that several of us have, but they've also built a lot of, like, rental homes on our street. They don't keep up their yards. People, you know, from those apartment complexes come blazing down Seventeenth Street South at fifty, sixty miles an hour sometimes. Um, so I don't know. I guess we're just a little bit concerned about more as har- apartment buildings. And the ones that they built recently, well, I teach art history at St. Cloud State, so I've studied architecture around the world. Uh, so I'm a little biased, but they just look a little bit cheap, like, maybe in ten, you know, they're fine now, but in ten, twenty years, are they still gonna look nice? Or is it really gonna drag our neighborhood down and property values and things like that? Um, I guess, yeah, so that's traffic is one concern. We have aesthetics of it is another concern a lot of neighbors have in that area. Um, and then one last thing is just, like, access to parks. They keep building more and more apartment complexes in that area, and where are all these kids supposed to play? There's no park, like, neighborhood park that they can easily walk or bike to. My kids always had to go all the way down to that water park tower, water tower park, um, which is like a mile away or so. And so it's just more apartments, more and more little kids, and I know they did build a playground at the community center, but there's no access really from the apartments in our neighborhood to get over there for kids on foot or bike or whatever. So just, like, green space, parks, um, more of a family-friendly feel to it, I guess. You know, they want to sell that property, but, um, just kind of maybe need to think about a long-term plan for the neighborhood, and it's getting to be a lot of apartment complexes and a lot of traffic.
Seventeenth Street. Thought they planned to put it through.
Oh.
Yeah, if, if you wouldn't mind stepping to the podium, we'd love to hear from you as well. Again, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Yeah, my, my name is Joyce Berg, and I live on the corner of Seventeenth Street and Seventh Avenue. So that property is just right there. Now, the Seventeenth Street now stops at that corner, and, but there's, you know, kind of an easy way. Is, is there a plan to put a street there? I mean, would that be, would that be part of it to extend Seventeenth Street? Because now, as, as Sarah said, people are roaring through there like anything, and kids play. There are kids on bikes, kids on scooter things, there are little kids, and they're on that street, and we certainly don't want anything like that to happen to a child. And, yeah, the police come through, but not often enough to, to stop the, the speeding and the roaring. And then they go down that, to, you know, towards that barn, and when it's big trucks and, you know, those kinds of people. See that sound old? But, uh, yeah, and green space. So now we're gonna lose our green space. We've lost so much of it already. And now, there, what about the, the birds and the, and the coyotes and the fox I used to see when I bought my property on that corner? You know, it's changed quite a bit, and I really, along with a lot of my neighbors, do not want to see it change anymore. But, you know, even townhouses would be better than huge apartments, but even that, we just I think there's a better, something better that can be done with that property. Like, if the city bought it and turned it, you know, into a, a place for families and kids and tr- you know, that's just what we think.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Trees and trails.
Anyone else wishing to testify? I'll give one final offer. Anyone wishing to testify? On the annexation and rezone of the wire property? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Uh, council, heard a number of questions that, uh, maybe we could walk through and then, um, get into further discussion. And I'm not sure, from a traffic perspective, I know Beadle Boulevard was a question. Um, so that will connect as part of, should this property develop out? That would be required to develop?
Mm-hmm, correct. That would be the one connection point.
Uh, how about Seventeenth Street as we're talking about roads there? That was also a question. Would Seventeenth Street continue west at all?
That's not a part of the plan currently.
Okay. Uh, and is that, I guess, part of any plan or just not part of this?
I don't recall that being a part of any of our future roadway plans. April, do you? Uh, you would know that better than I would.
Seventeenth Street, depending on how it develops, could potentially be extended and tie into Beadle Boulevard, and that intersection is something we've looked at as to where it would tie in, but it really depends on what would develop in the area and the need to extend the roadway or not. So not something that is proactively gonna be done, and it will depend on what's developed.
So it looks like on this map, and I'm not sure how accurate the lines are, but it looks like there's that sliver allowing Seventeenth Street to go through, but
We probably have right of way for it.
Wouldn't be the same owner, maybe?
Um, it's separate owners, that sliver. Um, that sliver also, um, underground is a trunk water and sewer main that we have a, an easement over, so that sliver is for that utilities and then also potentially for Seventeenth to extend west if needed.
Okay.
And just to clarify, we have not seen development plans for the site at all. Um, and so unsure of, you know, any site plan or specifically what would go there, just purely the request for R3 multifamily, high density.
Um, what's all included in multi, in R3? Obviously, um,
Apartments.
Apartments.
Yep.
Are townhomes included in R3?
It, it can be anything bel- anything below
Sure.
An apartment, but
That's right, yep.
Yeah, so you could, if you wanted to limit it to only townhomes, for example, that would be R2.
Or patio homes or
Yeah, yep.
Single family.
Yep.
But to your point, R3, zone R3 allows R2 and R1 automatically?
Exactly, yep.
Okay.
So it's not to say that the whole thing would necessarily be apartments. It could be anything, R3 or below. Um, but it gives you the, the highest possible opportunity by allowing R3, because then R2 and R1 can also be included within it.
Um, green space and parks were a, a few questions. Um, maybe you could talk about the park district and how any development, how the funds are allocated?
Yeah, so any development that takes place in the city, um, they pay a park dedication fee, and then that park dedication fee goes into our park fund, our capital improvement fund, and then it's required to be used towards park space, um, within our, our park system. Another point to be made on this, um, that council could also consider, which I know you did on the last site plan that we reviewed, is that you could make it a condition of the site plan that there would be, um, you know, playground or park space or green space as a part of it, and, and we added that as a condition on that last one. And so that's something that you could absolutely keep in mind pending what that site plan would come in as. It might already be included. It might not even be apartment. We don't, we have not seen anything, but you can also keep that in mind.
Yeah, I think the particular challenge there is that that serves the immediate needs of those residents, but maybe not the community whole. And as I look at this geographical area, we've got the community center to the south, and we've got a twenty-plus acre park to the east, um, which is likely going to re- or eat up or command the funds for that district.
Yep.
Um, green space was also talked about. Absolutely can appreciate that, hey, it was a field when I bought my house or lived there, and I want it to stay afield on the same way. Um, our, our role isn't to restrict, um, people from being able to develop their property, unfortunately. The, uh, the property owner has the full right, uh, just like any other property owner, to develop their property, which takes a field into a developed area. Aesthetics was the last one that I had documented. Um, I mean, we, we do have building code. We do have, um, requirements there. Not sure if you had anything to add on that.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add on that is just, I mean, they do have to meet our code, and they'll go through a full site plan and building permit review. Um, you know, of course, any developer that is developing something out, it's, it also has, there's a business model there on their end as well. And so they have to meet our code, um, while also respecting the fact that they're trying to run a business in the end that is ultimately their goal as well. So just finding that delicate balance there. Um, I would also just make sure to, you know, keep in mind and mention that, uh, we have a strong fire department inspections depart- department, and, and that is a really critical piece out of all this, is our prevention on the fire side of inspecting these multifamily properties. Um, and we've really taken to heightened focus on that as well to make sure that we are getting in them, we are inspecting them, because, um, to the point that you heard, they might look beautiful today, but in twenty years, um, making sure that they're maintained, and probably one, one of the best ways to do that is our inspections team, um, and they do great work on that. So I'd just add that as well as a, a point to keep in mind.
Anna, do you know why this particular parcel did come in with the other rezone that happened, the larger scale one at the end of, uh, last year?
I know it was on our list, um, you know, when we first provided the full list, and then the township had dialed it down to a more limited number, because it does have utilities within the
Yeah.
You know, so it's, and it is definitely an island property, but I think because there's a couple other ones grouped around in this entire area, um, it, they likely kept them all out for now, assuming that they'll come in with development.
All right, and my last one, um, I was just trying to get ahead of it. The round barn sits on this property. Um, to my knowledge, it's not part of a historic
It's not.
Uh, declaration. It's likely beyond any repair. Um, but I know there's a lot of passion about what can happen with the round barn, so.
Yes, we have had extensive conversations at, uh, department head level with Nikki of just making sure we engage the public if and when that decision comes forward. Nothing that we've seen today, but as you can imagine, if they're going to develop that site, I would suspect that that round barn would be removed. Um, we don't know that today, but if and when we would find out that information, we would make sure to, um, publicly control that narrative, just to, we know that it does have some sense of meaning. It's not a historical building, although some people do, um, think that that has historical, uh, records to it. Um, so we'll make sure to leverage our team here to, to, uh, share that narrative properly.
Council, are there any questions, uh, that I didn't capture?
Um, I think I saw, is this roughly ten acres? Is that what I read?
Yeah, it was
Is there a ballpark then, Anna? Like, how many apartments can we fit on ten acres? Is there a rule of thumb?
Ooh, April or Hunter, do you have a general idea? Trying to remember some of our recent ones that we
If you look directly north of here, there's another parcel roughly about that same size that has two apartment buildings on it. Um,
Once you've considered garages and parking space and setbacks, they'll have to fit Beadle Boulevard through there too.
Any other questions? Uh, seeing none, council in front of us is a request for annexation and R3 zoning designation. We can dive into further discussion, or I would take a motion?
I would move to approve the rezoning and the annexation.
There's a motion to approve the, uh, rezone to R3 and annexation? Is there a second?
All second.
There's a motion and a second. Uh, council discussion. I, I can absolutely, uh, understand the, we are becoming very dense in that area, uh, from multifamily and just number of people into that area. I do believe that connection to Beadle Boulevard will offer some relief, um, from the Roberts Road area. To what extent, I'm not sure, and, uh, without the connection of Seventeenth, I'm not sure what the overall impact's going to be. But I don't believe there'll be additional, um, impact on Seventeenth, I guess. Maybe, April, that'd be a question for you. Based on this property, would we allow a connection to Seventeenth for this access? Or could we force it off to Beadle Boulevard and/or
Skout.
Skout.
I think that would be a premature determination, not knowing any information about what would develop at the site.
So there is a possibility that our zoning would allow it to go and connect to Seventeenth?
Yes.
Council, that's something I would, I guess, have concern about, as I look at Skout and Roberts as our main thoroughfares there, not Seventeenth.
Are we getting, that's along, ahead of this approval, correct? I mean, there's a lot of planning that has to go into, take place on sites and submittals and so if we had concerns, we would have a review of that way before any time soon.
Well, as it sits right now, uh, council doesn't review site plan, so that would be a staff review, uh, with council having no engagement on it. Obviously, we could change that, um, but from a process perspective, that is how it would flow today, so long as they weren't asking for any variances.
Mayor, members of the council, um, if that, if you all agree with that approach of trying to, um, really leverage Beadle Boulevard and, and Skout, um, I certainly could bring that back to the site plan review aspect, and of course, engineering hears your feedback tonight too, but, um, not knowing the site plan, hard to say today, but I certainly can bring that back as, hey, if we, if there's any way that we can make this site work without continuing that Seventeenth Street, I'm, I'm certain that the, that would be taken into consideration in the site plan. It actually allows more space of that property.
It's a good transition piece of property between our commercial Coburns and the strip mall there, um, and the community center. I think it, it, it's got a lot of potential for a variety of different, you know, maybe it's apartments, maybe it's townhomes, but I, I think that it's a, a good transition step into that neighborhood behind.
Is the pond, is that a holding pond or wetlands or just holding?
Yeah, just holding.
Drainage.
A drainage pond, yeah. Um, also, I did, uh, just want to mention, um, Carrie just texted me and reminded us that we will have to plat it. So you will have an opportunity to see a preliminary plat and a final plat yet and have additional say on where some of those roadways would go.
And as part, part of the final plat, we could make a restriction at that point.
Yep, exactly, so just wanted to mention that as well.
Thank you, Carrie.
Yep.
Council, any other discussion on the, uh, rezoning and annexation request? Seeing none, uh, we do have a motion to approve both items. Call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries five zero. Onto consent agenda, uh, we have items, uh, five A through five D. Uh, I will pull item, um, C three. Are there any others? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of C three temporary permits. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries, uh, the temporary permits simply pulled, uh, to disqualify as a firefighter. Um, just they will have others disqualifying as well. And so, uh, we'll call for a vote, but, uh, I'll be disqualified. Dieters will be disqualified.
I'll disqualify myself as well.
Alright. Um, we'll look for a motion to approve item three C.
I will make that motion.
And we're gonna need you. Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries two zero with three disqualified. Alright, council, we have two action items, uh, first is final plat of Charles Gregg Edition, plat two.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, the second planning related item and last planning related item on, on my end tonight is. Uh, before you hear the final plat for Charles Gregg Edition plat two, it is for a lot, uh, directly adjacent to West Bank. There, you can see the blue shaded area, there is actually still, uh, room available for development beyond there, um. This has been passed by Planning Commission, they recommend approval at the last meeting on the fifth. Um, as I mentioned in our previous, uh, re- planning related item, some of the benefits of the city to be able to move forward with this final plat. Are items like trunk water, sewer, stormwater and park dedication fees that we talked about earlier. Current proposal for the construction on this site is for a new discount tire location. To date, the developer has submitted a site and drainage plan for review and they'll be submitting a full permit application, uh, assuming approval of this item tonight. Happy to take any questions, um, and answer them to the best of my ability.
Council, any questions on the final plat?
Anna, this site's been up and down a few times in our docket and we've, you know, heard from residents along the river over there and, uh. I take it that all those concerns with the buffering and the lights and all that stuff have been addressed and.
Um, yeah, I, I think it has calmed down a little bit as they've gotten used to West Bank there, one thing that I should note too is that West Bank and then also Discount Tire and then there is. Room for another lot there are all accessed off of a private drive on the front bell and drive and not on the backside, which is one of the biggest requests of those neighbors there. They wanted to keep that, what is that river? Yeah, um, so they are not accessible from River Vista, it's only from the, um, front bell and drive there.
And there is an access there, but it's by our emergency.
By our only, yep, yep.
It's right in, right out, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions on the final plat? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion on the final plat of Charles Gregg Edition plat two. So moved, there's a motion to approve, there's a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, that carries, onto Grizzly Lane Reconstruction Design Guidance.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council, um, I realize we typically don't bring projects, uh, back to council at the stage that this project is currently in. Um, however, based on feedback we got from agency reviews, um, there were enough impacts that we felt the intent. And the direction that council previously gave, um, would be changed enough that we wanted to bring it back. Um, to get further input and direction on how to proceed. Uh, just very briefly, the Grizzly Lane Reconstruction Project had three primary goals from the start, one was to address poor road conditions. Um, the other was to address, uh, traffic speeds and pedestrian safety. And then the third one there was to further reduce, um, flooding impacts in this area. To start with, just kind of a review of, um, council's direction or goals that were originally given, um. It was to provide on-road bike lane options instead of a sidewalk, but wanting to include additional safety measures such as. Um, reaction space delineators, pavement markings, rumble strips, so forth. It was also to provide traffic calming measures by reducing the travel lane widths. Um, it was a goal to retain the existing thirty-six foot wide roadway, um, to minimize impacts to those adjacent property owners that are. Already being impacted by the, um, current projects in the area. Uh, it was a desire to retain parking on at least one side of the roadway. And then at the time, we didn't have post office feedback yet, but there was a desire to maintain mailboxes in their current, um, condition or location, sorry. Um, with the general typical section or, or layout of the roadway that's shown on the screen, um. Kind of highlight there the, the bicycle, uh, striping, the reaction area and the, um. Channelizers for the westbound bike lane traffic and then the combined. Drive and bike lane on the eastbound traffic. So during the final design process, um, it's standard to submit those final plans to, uh, the state agencies for MINDOT review. Um, we always receive comment back from them, um, we also got comment back from the post office. And then also we received feedback from residents, additional feedback from residents in the area. It became clear in reviewing, uh, that feedback from the state agency and the post office. That all of the design goals that the council had laid out, um, could not be met and so. Um, there's gonna have to be a compromise or change in the street layout, uh, which is why we wanted to bring it back to council tonight for review. So tonight I'm gonna cover a summary of the state feedback, summary of the post office feedback and resident feedback and then go over some. Uh, alternative, uh, roadway layouts, uh, that made those requirements. I'll start with probably the most impactful feedback and that was the state aid feedback, um. Again, during the final design process, it's very standard for the state to do a much thorough review versus what they do in that preliminary design. Um, and so we got feedback from them additionally, because we were looking at, um, utilizing some of the channelizers, that reaction space. Uh, that bikeway striping, that dual drive bike lane, um, the district three staff in this area. Um, reached out to their, some of their metro colleagues to get some additional value be feedback. Those types of features are more commonly used in much more urbanized areas where you have, um. Narrower right of ways or, um, constrained right of ways, I'll talk about that more in a little bit. Um, so some specific feedback they had, um, first off, we talked about the rumble strips and. Those are just not allowed in residential areas because they are so loud, um, so that significant noise would impact residents. Um, in a very negative way, both during the day and at nighttime conditions. Um, they noted the number of parks and residential homes in the area and so they did ask a question of. Why, uh, council decided to move forward with, uh, a bike lanes and not also accommodate pedestrian traffic. Um, however, they do recognize and we had a, a good conversation that there are other local considerations that the council has to consider when making their decisions. Um, and so then we went and moved on to focusing on council's direction of those on-road bike lanes. Um, and their concerns with those on-road bike lanes. Excuse me, so they had some concern about the two-foot reaction buffer and the four-foot delineators. Not in the aspect that we were proposing them, but they just noted that they're not a requirement for bike lanes on the roadway. Um, they also noted that the westbound bike lane seemed to have a lot more safety features. Than what we were proposing for the eastbound bike lane and they wanted to see us utilize that two-foot space. Um, to more equalize the safety for both direction of the bike lanes, um, eastbound and westbound. Um, another concern they had, um, was just the use of minimum widths on a compounding aspect. Um, in fact, they noted in, in their requirements on a photo note that. A combination of minimum widths of the driving lane, bicycle lane and parking lane is only permissible under a variance. Uh, so we had a, a good discussion about variance and when a variance can be considered, um, and it can be considered when there's low. Uh, truck or bus traffic, um, when the right of ways are constrained and when design speeds are less than thirty-five miles per hour. Um, up on the screen, I list the parameters specific to Grizzly Lane, uh, it, it does have a, a lower ADT. It does have, um, less than three percent truck or bus traffic and its design speed is below thirty-five miles per hour, however. They noted that we do not have a constrained right away. Um, the right away there is sixty-six feet wide, um, and so what that means is the city has substantial right away. That can and should be utilized rather than compounding minimum lane widths, um, so. They would not approve a variance in this case because, one, we have the space to widen the road, um, and they noted. It would have to be widened like one to four feet depending on what council decided in order to meet the requirements and you would not have to compound those minimum. Lane widths. Yeah, we did talked about not wanting to widen the road and why council didn't wanna widen the road and they, um. Understood not wanting to further impact properties that are already being impacted significantly from adjacent, um, projects. And so we talked through that a little bit and their recommendation or what they would like to see in that case is, um, remove parking. In the roadway for, um, that blue line along Grizzly, uh, which would be the properties adjacent to the, um. Other projects in the area which is highlighted with the red dash line and then widen the roadway for the rest of the Grizzly Lane corridor to accommodate, um. Those average wing lifts, lane widths and not the compounding minimum lane widths. So looking at the state aid feedback and accommodating, um, bicycle traffic only. And then keeping a similar typical section than what we had proposed before, what the state would require is narrowing the westbound bike lane from seven feet. Down to five feet, removing that two, two-foot reaction area. Increasing that shared drive bike lane in the eastbound direction to fourteen feet and then provide that parking at seven feet. However, it should be noted that with the state's required changes, this option no longer meets a lot of the council's goals. Um, and that it actually provides a less safe, um, non-vehicle traffic corridor than before for the. Reason that we're increasing the, the road width by one foot, so we're not maintaining that thirty-six foot wide roadway. Um, that westbound, um, traffic, those increased parameters of that reaction that the. The council wanted and the delineators had to be removed. The eastbound traffic lane, we're not able to keep that narrow for that traffic coming, cause we'll have to widen that to fourteen feet. Um, and then of note, and we'll talk about this in a second, um, mailboxes, um, you wouldn't be able to keep the mailboxes in the same location and we'll talk about that in a second. So looking at an alternative typical section that would meet state aid and several of the, the council's goals would be to. Maintain the street width at the thirty-six feet, but in order to do that, we would have to eliminate parking and provide. Um, on-road bike lanes in each direction, um. Excuse me, again, the biggest and significant impact here would be having to remove parking on both sides of the roadway. I wanna note, state aid's preferred typical section would be to accommodate both pedestrian and bicycle traffic and so they always encourage the use of. Off-road multi-use trails, however, they did acknowledge there are other local constraints that council has to consider and so. Um, just wanted to make note of, you know, this would be their preferred option with that off, um, off-road trail, um, but they recognize that. The on-road bike lanes is what is preferred, um, at council with this project. Uh, we were able to meet with the post office, um, after several phone calls and, and going to their site. Uh, the postal service does prefer channelized box banks or mailbox banks, uh, for safety. Uh, safety for the residents, safety for the delivery, um, staff and then also safety for the mail. Uh, since it is in locked areas, um, they noted that individual mailboxes in their current locations would not be reinstalled. If bike lanes were added to the roadway, um, instead mailbox banks would be planned. Uh, they don't know the final location of those mailbox banks and wouldn't until after, um, construction was done. Um, if, per, um, if preserving those individual, individual mailbox locations is a priority for council. Uh, they did say they would allow them if bike lanes are not added to the roadway. And if there is, uh, a buffer or boulevard space behind the curb to allow for, uh, the mailbox to be installed. We did receive some additional feedback from residents regarding that specific guidance and goals, um. Roadway layout that the council provided, um, comments we got back was there was concern about the green paint, uh, for the bike lanes. Uh, they were concerned about the four-foot delineators and then, uh, just a lot of questions around the mailboxes, whether that was banks, uh, or individual mailboxes. Uh, so based on the feedback we received from the state and the post office and then knowing that the council's desire is to. Retain the on-road, uh, bike lanes, kinda have two options for a street layout a- available that would meet those. One would be maintaining that thirty-six foot wide width, if that is a priority for council, that would eliminate the parking. Um, there'd be the use of the mailbox banks and then there would be a reduction in those safety features with removal of the four-foot delineators and that two-foot. Reaction time for that westbound lane. Um, the other option would be to increase the roadway width by three feet, again, you would have to utilize the mailbox banks. Um, you would reduce the safety features again with losing that reaction, uh, two-foot reaction and the four-foot delineators. And then in this case, the road, uh, the bike lanes would be narrowed from, uh, seven-foot bike lanes that were shown in the, a previous, um. Layout to five-foot bike lanes in, uh, the layout shown currently. So just kinda summarize, the on-road bike lane options at this, at this time include one where you need to widen the roadway. Or one where you have to eliminate parking, um, we do, it does re- reduce those safety features that the council, um, had expressed they wanted to see. And then mailbox things would be required for both options. With that, I'm gonna, a pause for a second, um, I recognize that there were, uh, other options included in the council packet. Um, and we don't need to even review those, um, those were included just because we. Needed some additional direction based on the feedback tonight and so not knowing, uh, where the council was at, if. Council is in agreement on one of these two options, we don't even need to review those options, I just wanted to be prepared. Um, in case, uh, discussion went in other directions, so apologize if that created some confusion. Uh, again, just wanted to be prepared, uh, depending on where discussion goes at this point. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, before we get into particular layouts, are there any questions for engineering or other staff? Can we offer a little bit of context too, um, this was originally planned for workshop. Our policy governance committee, uh, meets on Wednesdays to review agenda, um. I specifically felt like this was a big public topic and, uh, didn't fit the. Our desire workshops of an educational item, uh, and secondly, staff needs an action from council on this. We can't take action in a workshop and so, um, I moved the committee to bring this. What would be old business, but as an action item on our current agendas, uh, so we could talk about it. Any questions?
Um uh more comments than a question. I I think with the alterations to what the state is telling us or demand, we're missing the the gist of what we were trying to accomplish with the bike path. I think the pedestrian safety is is the number one concern from everybody sitting at this council, on the council. And I I don't need two bike paths, and I definitely don't want to see no parking. I mean, that that's ridiculous to me. I mean, I I couldn't imagine not being able to park in front of my house. So if, you know, I think we should probably identify that pedestrian traffic or pedestrian safety is the number one issue. If it's a bike path and a sidewalk or a bike path and, you know, or a just a sidewalk or a trail, something has to give, and it it definitely isn't this. We don't have this much traffic on, you you know, we it's not like we're downtown Minneapolis and there's a thousand bikes rolling through. Um it really comes down to families and kids going from school bus to the park or home to the pool or whatever, so the main gist is, let's make our pedestrian traffic have a place, and and we'll we'll figure out from there. That's my thoughts anyways.
I would concur. I think the other big item, the one item that I would say that we all agreed on, uh the last point was the road width. We didn't want to impact yards further. Um and and it could be stand uh stand corrected if anyone felt differently, but I felt like thirty-six was where what it was today, and we don't want to move those curbs uh take up anymore.
It was a foot of each, I think the compromise came to about a foot each side.
Yep. Um but again, by opening that, by making it wider, it does create a lot more options for us to consider. I would agree, Tim. I don't think we need double-sided. And when I heard that no parking along all of Grizzly would be eliminated, I I while we heard from one resident saying they'd be happy with it, um I recognize that resident lives on a corner and would be the only one that would be probably in favor of it is they could allow parking on the side street. Uh I cannot imagine, uh we had a resident uh email us all today that said due to the trailer size, they can't back up a utility trailer in their driveway due to the pitch of their of their driveway. They couldn't actually do yard work or utilize a trailer at their residence, which is mind-blowing to me. So I hope we would all adamantly uh go against the double no parking. I also don't know that I love the proposed design where towards Thirteenth Street, it is narrower uh or no parking, and then it it widens up. I think we need to be consistent throughout.
Rusty?
I would agree, yes.
Yeah, I think we tried to obviously make a solution with the options that we had in limiting, you know, balancing the safety with the actual saving of the yard space. I know you do have some other uh examples in here that I would love to see just from the packet. Uh just because I felt like they maybe met some of all of the things we were trying to do from a safety as well as a width perspective. I know you had some thirty-seven, thirty-eight options in the packet, so I would love to see those as we move forward, but.
Any other comments, or should we dive into options?
Well, I I feel like we settled this once, and we're back here now. Um you had a you had a a diagram up early April that said this is less safe than what we have now. Is it possible to go back to that?
Yeah, I can explain that a little bit more too, if that's helpful.
Yes, it would be.
Yeah, uh so this one, the reason um we feel that this one would be less safe than um what we were proposing for foreign existing conditions is because um the bike lane, we were originally were looking at a seven-foot bike lane. Um this would narrow it down to to a five-foot uh bike lane, and and a foot and a half of that is eaten up by the gutter, so you end up with like a three-and-a-half-foot wide pavement um for the bike lane and then a foot and a half of the gutter. Uh also less safe because you're losing that two-foot reaction between that westbound bike lane and um the driveline and that four-foot delineator. Uh the other reason we felt it was less safe is because your um eastbound shared drive bike lanes going up to a fourteen-foot driveline, um and one of the goals was to keep those lanes narrow to provide traffic calming. If you have that wide fourteen-foot, uh you're not providing that traffic calming effect. So that was the basis for that comment, and I I recognize that is up to interpretation a little bit, but that's why we felt it was um less safe.
So what do we have there right now?
Uh right now, we have uh two eleven-foot lanes that uh Public Works marked, and then um parking on either side. So we don't have any designated pedestrian ways currently, um which also is why.
Oh, why does the parking then?
The parking at thirty-six foot wide, um it would be seven feet on each side.
There was a picture in there.
Yeah, there is a picture. Those didn't look seven-wide to me. That's what I was asking.
Yeah, hold on, let me have that one here.
So I was wondering if the if the drivelines currently are a little wider than eleven.
They might be eleven and a half. I guess I would have to verify that. I know we striped them narrower than twelve, and we might have gone with eleven and a half.
Do you have that picture?
I don't have that one up up on the screen. My apologies for that.
I think you had it in the
Um so
You had it in your presentation.
It it would be this typical section, but with parking instead of bike lanes.
You have, you have it in there, right there.
Oh, that one, got it.
Okay. So that, on each side of that white lane, that's seven feet?
Uh six and a half feet if it's eleven-and-a-half-foot lanes, um seven feet if it's eleven-foot lanes.
Okay. Um we might have discussed this before. It's been a couple months. What makes Grizzly Lane a state aid road?
Um it's designated within the state aid roadway system, so the city um based on population and uh traffic counts is assigned so many um miles of state aid eligibility roadways. And then we designate um roadways for classification within the state aid system, and it has to meet minimum criteria in order to be included as part of that state aid system. Um so Grizzly Lane met that minimum or that criteria uh to become a state aid roadway.
Has it been a state aid roadway a long time?
Um I would have to look back to see the exact date that it became a state aid roadway. I don't have that information available currently.
Do you think it's recent, or it's been a long time?
Uh it's within the last
Okay.
Three to five years.
Okay. Do we have other residential roads that are in that same category?
Um similar type roadways, um yeah, so Twelfth Street North. Um Second and a Half Street is in the state aid roadway. I'll hundred if you're able to bring that map up as well. Second and a Half would probably be the most comparable roadway with the driveways coming off of it.
Sure. Okay. I was just curious, uh because I don't know, I'm a little frustrated because we we've invested a lot of time, we got a lot of feedback on it, we heard it from uh residents at a public hearing, we we received dozens of emails after that public hearing. Um it just, it feels like we settled the issue, but now the state, I guess, gets a veto on it. Um I I agree, no parking is not an option. The mailboxes are going to have to be moved because the only option the post office will accept is the four-foot boulevard. That's the only option.
So unless you're willing to widen even more, correct?
Right, so. I don't know. I'd like to see us stick with a plan as close to the uh original design as possible, but um there there has to be parking, I fear of that.
I want to build on that state aid question. Um so we designated state aid. We obviously then can remove from state aid. Is there an, what is the potential impact of not having that a state aid roadway?
You don't qualify for the state aid funds, so um the project and the project's costs will qualify for state aid funding, and we can request and reimburse um those project costs through state funds.
That's our current, so our current funding for this road is contingent on it staying a state aid roadway? Or would we be able to, you talked about mileage within our city, could we designate a different roadway as state aid?
In the future, you could choose to remove this from the state aid system and allocate it to a different roadway that met the criteria.
Okay. Um but and current funding, sorry, this current funding, is that contingent on it staying a state aid roadway?
Um we were counting for this to be part of that state aid system and a and those state aid funds, and get reimbursed through those state aid funds long-term. I don't know if that answers your question. I guess maybe clar- more clarification on your question?
Yeah, I I guess we we got some grant funding for this roadway to do this project, and I'm wondering if that grant funding is contingent on it staying a state aid road or not.
Uh no, the grant funding was for the flood mitigation aspects of the roadway and is not contingent on the state aid funding.
Of all up to that, then, the state aid accounts for how much of their funding on this project?
Um a hundred percent of the construction costs qualify for state aid funding. And you can get reimbursed. So the the city has allocated a certain amount of state aid funds annually. Um and so you request those state aid funds, and you get reimbursed by that amount um each year based on the state aid eligible projects that you have.
So the state's paying one hundred percent of this?
Yeah, I, Mayor Roberts, the council, I'm gonna try to explain this a little bit because we have grant funding for this, and so the grant funding is is separate, and that the project's being funded through the of the grant funding. Where you'll, where you would see the biggest difference is that if we were to remove this out of state aid, it would affect our our MSA state aid funding um amount that we get annually each year. And so that amount will lower, which we do budget for and account for. And then, and that is a revenue that goes straight to our street fund. So that's where you'd see the largest impact would be directly into your street fund, your capital fund, and and maybe not as closely tied directly, don't think of it as you're submitting an invoice for this project to be reimbursed out of these state aid funds. It's a, it's a s- a amount, a formula of state aid funds that are predetermined based on the miles of state aid roads that then go into our street fund, if that helps. So if you remove this, you get less for your street fund.
And the removal and adding of roads in state aid fund, what's the process look like for that?
Um the process is you submit a formal request um to the state agency, and they review the removal and the addition of a another roadway. Um that gets approved through their process. A resolution has to be passed by council, um and then it gets allocated that following year to the changes to the state aid system.
That's based on mileage? A certain amount of miles of state aid road in Sartell can qualify?
Correct. So you get allocated a certain amount of mileage based on traffic counts and population.
And Mayor Roberts, the council, you might recall my Friday update this last week. They're going through and updating those traffic counts. That's why that's so important to know what those traffic accounts are, because then that can determine if we have mileage that can put it as a state aid road that we then get reimbursement for, so um they were supposed, that should have been done over COVID years, and it's been delayed a few years now, so we're we're well overdue for that.
Council, one call as we're having this discussion, I I would like us to see um as for a workshop from a pure learning side, us to review our state aid roads. I appreciate the financial support from the state, but I don't like the uh limitations that they can or or do impart onto us. Um and so I want to make sure that our stated roads are those more collector roadways that um you know, don't maybe touch residential near as much, but would like that from just a learning development for all of us, understand that a little bit deeper.
Uh Mayor, I'll just add on to that um great point you make. I think that's an awesome educational tool. You might remember that we had talked about in the budget session, the risk of these state aid funds too, because we advance them. Um and so there may be some strategy there for us to dial back the number of roads, and I mean, it affects our street funds. We have to really play that math out carefully and timing-wise, it might be, need to be five, six years out, but um there is some risk there that we're advancing further than than what we technically are eligible for, and that could be very problematic if they pulled that back. And so I think it's a great educational topic for us to to consider at some point. I can add that to our list.
Council, why don't we dive into some of the the options? Uh I think we can remove the options that have no parking. I've heard consensus support on that. Is there maybe on width, we can narrow down? Um is there a strong desire from majority to expand it beyond thirty-six, which is which is the uh imprint today? Or should we keep it at thirty-six? And I guess that might help steer us in what options we should evaluate.
I know from the list, that was in the packet, um looking at the thirty-seven uh foot options with no boulevard. Parking still was included, and I believe there was a trail uh in that. It could have been thirty-eight, but I know it got to the pedestrian side, that's thirty-eight, but there, I think there was one that was thirty-seven potentially.
Uh the middle one there, I think.
There you go.
Um so these are the different options with a a sidewalk. Um and parking on one side, um depending on reaction distance and the parking width, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-foot wide options. Um here's options with a multi-use trail, which can accommodate pedestrians and bike traffic. Um options at thirty-eight feet, forty feet, and forty-two feet.
And when it says trail, that's both walking and biking, correct?
Yes. When you uh move to a trail, um it can accommodate eight-foot wide. They prefer ten feet wide, but you can go down to eight feet wide, and it's considered to accommodate both bicycle and pedestrian tra- tra- uh traffic. Of note, if you went with a multi-use trail, uh the city has historically taken care of snow removal on those um more regional-type trails. I know that was a concern for some of the residents, so a trail option. Um city would take care of that snow removal.
What was the, was there a slide before this? Uh there, thank you.
Council, trying to recall some of the feedback from last, uh when we had public hearings from from residents. Obviously, mixed of of on-road, off-road. There was
Mayor, I'll, I, I mean, you know this too. You've been through a nu- a number of these. Anytime we do sidewalks like this, one of the biggest items, and and we heard it again with this one, is snow removal.
Yeah, yep.
That that was loud and clear, was just that extra burden of having to take care of snow removal, and then you you inherently also risk will people remove it, and then can people actually use it? Um and so I I feel like that was one of the biggest pieces of feedback, was concern over that snow removal.
So on this um section, when it says walk, that's not the multi-use trail on these options?
No, that's a a concrete sidewalk um versus the multi-use trail goes uh concrete sidewalk, six feet wide, concrete, multi-use trail, eight-foot wide paved uh path.
And what's the standard for parking? Is it, I've seen a couple where it's seven to eight. Is there any at six?
Um eight is preferred, seven is minimum.
Okay. I guess to Tim's point earlier, when we talk about the common goal would be pedestrian safety. Um I particularly do like the parking on the same side as the trail or sidewalk. Um I just feel like that offers additional buffer. I think a counterargument to that could be you're gonna have people coming out between parked cars. Um not sure I anticipate a lot of uh density of cars parked in this parking lane. Uh I think it'll be more sporadic. But it's for, it's it's the option that separates the community public from the uh walking, biking public, which I guess I would be a strong supporter of.
Yeah, I'm a big supporter of that as well. Um April on um the the uh current approved plan that was turned down by the state, the thirty-six, did that eat up a foot on each side already? Is that correct, or was that without eating up any of the yards?
Um the the original direction.
So right now, this says thirty-eight. I think the one that we sent to the state was thirty-six. And that was one foot on each side already?
Thirty-six would be the same footprint as what's out there today.
Oh, it's same footprint, that's not eating up any of the air?
Correct. Thirty-six foot is what is existing. So the thirty-eight foot would be a foot additional on each side.
Council, that's that's where I'm leaning. I I like the trail. This option one or the slide before option one with the sidewalk, if you don't think you need the bike trail, because there's the parking lane there as well, but those are the two that I would be in support of.
Can you show us that one with the sidewalk again?
In April, the trail has to be eight to be considered a trail?
Correct.
I, I do think the trail's great, um, but if I revert back to some of the feedback we've gotten, it's.
It's a lot of yard.
It's, um, it's a lot of impact. I, I guess as I as I think about it, if we can fit a, a trail, it's only one foot impact to each side. So today, we can accomplish the top one without, without any impact to someone's irrigation and lawn, which we heard loud and clear. And I think we would all agree if it was ours.
I don't think that's true, right?
Um, so, I mean, thirty-six foot wide would be the footprint that's there today. Um, you're still gonna have construction, so their sprinkler systems will still be impacting during construction. Um, but you could do a six-foot walkway with one, parking on one side and maintain that thirty-six foot wide total snow removal would be the responsibility of the property owner.
Maybe a different way of saying that is what they see of their yard today is what they would see of their yard in the future, right? So they recognize their yard grass depth is a certain dimension. If we keep it thirty-six, it should be there.
Except for the six-foot sidewalk.
Six-foot sidewalks included.
And minus their mailbox.
Okay, okay, sorry. I was, this.
Yeah, so the six-foot sidewalk is included in the thirty-six. Their front yard is their front yard once construction's complete. Uh, has limited impact. Um, and I think as we weigh the other one, which is thirty-eight feet and it would take a foot on each side of the road that's there today, today. It gets us to an eight-foot bike path, which then the city covers the, um, removal and also upkeep and maintenance of, correct? Whereas as a concrete six-foot walk, residents are required to maintain and upkeep that. Um, so for me, it comes down to, hey, what's that impact of snow removal and maintenance? Uh, versus, and, and if, in that, we're trading off one foot of each side of the road for their lawn.
If we're on the right side of that picture with a one-foot buffer between the curb and the road, is that normal in the city on these type streets?
Uh, typically you would see two feet, but in talking through that with state aid, they would go down to one foot.
So, I mean, if, if we're in agreement on the top two, it, it comes down to do we want it thirty-six or thirty-eight? Because if you want it thirty-six, you have to have a six-foot. And if you are okay with thirty-eight, you can go with the trail.
Can you pull one slide down on that other option? Was that also one foot on the right? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Or has anyone else dreamt up a fifteenth option we could consider?
Tunnel.
Overpass?
Yep.
I know snow removal was a big, um, concern brought up and thanks for the residents. They've given us a lot of feedback today as, as well as prior. So we have a good feeling, not that they all have the same opinions, but we had definitely heard a lot of feedback. So we appreciate that.
So do we plow their path or do we let them do it? That's really how it comes down to it.
Yeah, so six or eight.
Six or eight.
Correct. I think in the summer, they're gonna prefer a six-foot sidewalk and in the winter, they're gonna prefer an eight-foot trail.
Think it's adjustable?
Well, Council, I'll look for a motion. Is someone, uh, ready to make a motion on one of the options?
Do we have a lot of trails on roads like this, um, in that area or are they mostly sidewalks?
Can we go back to the, uh, first image up here? So, uh, looking at this map, the blue lines are existing trail in the area and the red lines are existing sidewalk in the area. So it's a mixture of both.
But Grizzly extends into a trail, correct?
Correct.
Across nineteenth?
Yeah, the blue line west of nineteen there.
Did we ask Public Works if they can handle another road to snowplow?
I did discuss this with, uh, the supervisors this morning, um, and, and made them aware that it could be a path, uh, which they're used to. I mean, that's, it, they can get in their gators and plow that. Um, their biggest request was not doing the delineators. They, having to remove those and put them in and out and, and, um, the extra work that that would take. And it, it sounds like that wasn't an option anyways. Uh, but they are used to the plowing. In some ways, um, they did express that it's easier for them to plow it than to have the neighbors because they will plow into their drivelines of plowing. It, especially if there's not a boulevard, so.
So I, I did wonder the same question, whether we, they can handle it or not, but I guess you're saying that's not a big deal. A couple of the other, um, couples, some of the residents raised, um, if we put a trail in there, a lot of them are saying like the trail we have around the wilds right now is totally disintegrated and in poor shape. Are we gonna let this trail, if we put a trail, if that's the option we go? Are we gonna maintain it to an acceptable level that people will use it and like it?
Um, generally what we try to do is when a road is, um, reconstructed, um, we'll also upgrade the trail at that point. Um, much like the West Side Reconstruction Project, there's a number of trails in those areas that were redoing at that time. If a trail isn't along a roadway, um, it's not currently in a plan, but we are working to identify those to make sure that we're also doing upkeep on them. So, uh, of note that the trail in that Wilds Park isn't in the greatest condition in some locations mainly because of roots and stuff intruding on it. Um, but it's not along a roadway, so those trails, um, I know Public Works staff and the Parks Department are, are trying to proactively identify those, um, so that they are maintained moving forward. Anything else you want to add?
No, the only thing I would add to that, um, and, you know, we'll see if the future Public Works Director has a different opinion, but, um, outgoing, uh, John's opinion, as that trail within the park system was degrading was to remove it. Um, and, and do more of a grass feature or you could even do like a, you know, crushed gravel type trail because it's not along a roadway. It's it doesn't necessarily need to be a paved. It was just done that way as a part of the development and adds cost to the city. It could be a safety hazard if they trip, they fall. So there is actually portions of that that have been removed over time and so I, I, but also recognizing that that creates frustration for residents because they look at it as an amenity. I mean, Tim, you can speak to that.
Yeah, I, I'm on that trail, uh, and I'm not kidding you daily. Uh, and it's in not great condition, but it's, it's navigable. You can walk it, you can bike it, you can skate it. Kids are on a skateboard and riding it. So I would highly recommend not taking it to gravel because there's a lot of wield activity that goes on there for kids, little kids away from the street that cruise down there on their roller blade or skateboards, but um, uh, yeah, I think we just have to get it into a maintenance, um, schedule to, to update and make sure we patch and keep it up. But I, I like nineteenth. If this would be very similar to nineteenth, the pathway going out there is in great condition. It's used immensely. So this would be a, a great add to that loop, I'm, I'm guessing.
Council, do we have a motion to move this, uh, aspect forward?
Well, I would, uh, uh, um, lean more towards the trail. I could live with the sidewalks, but I'll make a motion for the thirty, uh, eight foot roadway, um, eating up one foot on each side specifically, not to take it from one side or the other with the trail, parking and the eleven-foot roadways.
Um, just so that we're all clear and we don't need to describe it, are we able to pull up?
Yeah, can you give me the num- option number and go to that slide?
Option visually that Councilmember Meyer is referring to? Is this?
Yes.
Yep, that's it.
Okay, so we have a motion. I don't know, do we have a number on this? Maybe not?
Uh, it would be, um, figure number ten within your packet.
Okay. Uh, Jeb, would you amend your motion just to recognize number ten, just so we have clarity?
As long as it's number ten, yeah.
Yes, I amend my motion too.
Number ten.
We have a motion to approve, uh, number ten, option number ten is presented on the screen. Is there a second?
All second.
A motion and a second, uh, discussion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I've, I've made my opinion known, but at the same time, I guess, you know, we're, we're gonna try to find consensus and find the option that works. I can see the direction that this is going. Um, that being said, I guess I'd, I would support the trail option because again, you're gonna lose one foot. Um, I don't, nobody wants to necessarily lose that. It's gonna require sprinkler impacts. It's going to require a little bit of work, but I also do think the snow removal is a big thing too. And if the city is taking over the snow removal. You're losing one foot with no additional burden on the homeowners during the winter, so, um, it's probably not the, uh, option I would have taken because I obviously voted for something different the first time, but um, it seems like the best consensus option at this point.
Well said. Um, April, question for you.
Yep.
Do we have high confidence this project gets approval? Because we don't want to talk more again.
Once we get into the final design process, um, the state does a much more thorough review of it versus when in the preliminary design because they know in preliminary can continue to change. And so, uh, we did talk through these, um, fairly in depth and had a good meeting and they've been a good partner and they did recognize the additional impacts. And so, uh, yes, short answer is yes.
I'm glad you got there because I was hearing maybe the whole time. So yes, we have high confidence from engineering that this will be supported by our partners at the state.
Mayor, I just, point of clarification.
Yes.
You did review this option with them?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to hear that. I don't want to be back here.
Me neither.
Mayor?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think it, this accomplishes, as compromised as this road has been over how many months have we looked at it now? Couple, three months now? Um, I think the safety aspect is what trumps everything and, and this looks like a, a wonderful option on that. I, I know that I feel for the residents that are on that thirteenth side or towards Grizzly and thirteenth there, that the land in the back and the front. Right, honestly, if you look at the houses that were on River Road that had the pathway go through the front of theirs. We heard the same story, but now most of the people have come back and said they really appreciate that trail in front of their house where they have connectivity right out the door and and, and so on. Plus you don't have to mow as much, I guess. Um, but I really think the, the safety is gonna be key, so, and we're saving parking.
All right, uh, motion for item number ten. Now there's a second, um, call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That carries five zero. Uh, sorry, one quick follow-up, April. Still on plan that that could be completed this year? Um, substantially completed this year?
Substantially completed this year. Still the goal.
Thank you. Uh, on to item eight, Administrator and Departmental Incident Report. Uh, we have administrator incident reports from May second and ninth.
Mayor Members of Council, you have my report that comes out via email. Happy to answer any questions that may have come up as reading those.
Any questions for City Administrator? Seeing none, thank you. Public Works, Engineering?
Evening, Mayor, Members of Council. You have our monthly report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Public Works or Engineering? Last one before we have a new Public Works Director? Uh, Public Safety?
Mayor Members of the Council, you have my report. Stand for any questions.
Any questions for Public Safety?
All three departments now in one report? Pretty fancy.
And Engagement?
Mayor Members of the Council, my monthly, monthly report is in front of you. A couple of things I just wanted to point out, um, since it involves so much of our, so much of our staff. Um, International Firefighters Day, National Police Week and National Public Works Week are all in the month of May. So I just want to publicly state that we really appreciate each and every one of them and all they do for our community. And then another thing is Anne Deuschre Domreis. This is officially her last week and the public open house, um, to come have cake and bid her farewell is on Thursday from three to five.
Awesome. Any questions for Nikki? Thank you. Uh, Council updates, Tim?
Nothing tonight.
Pat?
Nothing.
Rusty tonight? Jeb?
Just win, wish Anne the best and, and thanks for all her service.
Absolutely.
Awesome. And the only thing I would add, Nikki already hit on it, but is the, uh, Police Officer Week, uh, recognition. Um, I think we can all agree that we've got the best of the best in the force. Uh, and so love to see our community, how they embrace that and support our officers. Um, and I know surrounding communities are doing some similar work as well, so. That is all I have. I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn.